Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council. Pleasure to have you here today, Tuesday, August 29, 2017. We're back from recess, and I hope that everyone had a wonderful vacation. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:10 PM. And I have to ask for your -- us being late tonight, you know, we had a lot of discussions. We're going to open up the meeting with roll call for Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Ms. Hodges.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Moving on to invocation, Ms. Hodges.
First, I would like to say, welcome back to the students of Harrisburg High and Harrisburg SciTech and the rest of the school districts of Harrisburg, and I hope that you guys have a safe and productive school year. And also, I want to have a moment of silence for the residents of Texas who have been affected by Hurricane Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Moving on to Pledge Allegiance, Mr. Allott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, everyone. We have a very large agenda this evening, and I have a lot of audience here. Welcome, everyone. Please come to other meetings besides having something controversial on the agenda. We'll start off with Communications with Mayor Patton-Fuss, who will introduce new city employees.
Thank you, Madam President, members of City Council. I just wanted to take a moment, we will be brief, to introduce some of the new employees that have joined the City of Harrisburg really over the past month while you all have been on recess. We've got a great team and some exciting new spaces faces with a lot of interesting backgrounds. So I thought I could just introduce each of them, give them one minute, one minute only, just to tell you briefly about themselves, and then you'll at least be able to have a face, and then you can speak to them all individually at a later time. And also, a good opportunity to introduce them to the public. So we'll start at this end, maybe pull the mic so you can speak right into it. But some of you may know Shoshawn, this is Shoshawn Dial-Snowden. She is our new Director of Social Equity and Affirmative Action, which was previously part of the Risk Management position in Harrisburg that we lost when Kalisha Haukis retired. She is doing great work for us, and Shoshawn, if you want to just give them a minute, I think they'll be impressed.
Well, greetings, City Council. My name is Shoshawn Dial-Snowden. I'm a resident 2405 Swaterra Street in Harrisburg. I've been a resident of Harrisburg since 1999, originally an Army brat, but the arts community rooted me here. And so I'm excited to serve in this capacity. The main three branches of the position are affirmative action, also social equity, and also getting the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission staffed and up and running. So we currently have two of nine seats filled, so I will be bringing amazing individuals in front of you to serve in that capacity in one, two, and three-year terms. Also looking forward to social equity, really doing an analysis of whom the community, who the city's serving, what communities are on our radar, how are we serving them, and what communities aren't, and whom we need to identify and serve better. And of course, affirmative action is staying in federal, state, and local compliance.
Thank you.
Shoshawn, next up, we have Ron Taylor. He's come all the way from Chicago to Harrisburg to be our new Director of Parks Maintenance. This is a new position that you created this year, and we're really excited to have Ron on board. His first big test is going to be upcoming this weekend with Capona, but let me let Ron say a few words.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, my name is Ron Taylor. I'm from Chicago. I decided to come here because of the, at the behest of Mr. Johnson back there, who convinced me not to go to California and/or to Denver, but to come to Harrisburg. It's an unusual challenge and a, and I must say, now that I've been here for a few weeks, a hard-working challenge. It's more than I expected, but I found Harrisburg to be a city, as I constantly say, of just enough. There are just enough people, there's just enough interest, there's just enough attitude, and there's just enough traffic to keep you interested. A lot of challenges, and most of my challenges in my position have been in implementing processes because there is a lot of know-how, a lot of talent on my team, but that talent, over the years, goes on and moves on. So you have to be in a position where everything is interchangeable, and so that's what I've been working on, processes. I have a background in sustainability, and so sustainability teaches us that everything should be self-sufficient and constantly efficient. So that's what I'm striving for in the department right now.
Thanks, Ron. Glad to have you here. Next up is our new IT Director. His name is Steve Bortner. He comes from the private sector. And unable to join us tonight is the Deputy Director, Mr. Eric Collins. So there's been quite a lot of change. There's also a new IDMS programmer not here, but Steve represents basically a complete overhaul of our IT department. We're really lucky to have you. Steve, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. Steve Bortner, new Director of IT. I've been with the city for a little over a month now. Prior to that, I worked for 33 years in the private sector, the last 31 of them with the Baltimore Life Insurance Company down in Owens Mills, Maryland. And for the last four years with Baltimore Life, I had a similar position with them. I was born, raised, and still live in Southern York County, so I make the 40-mile commute every day. Since I've been here, I've been trying to understand the status of the systems that we have, understand the challenges and priorities, and work with others to make recommendations on things that will benefit the city. Once we have a baseline understanding, we'll figure out what we do with some of the technologies. And in the next couple of weeks, we'll restart the IT Advisory Committee meeting so that we can understand what those needs are for all the various departments and address their needs. Thank you for your time, and it's very nice to meet you.
Thank you, Steve. We're glad you're here. Next up, when Kalisha left employment of the city, we had a number of risk management tasks that needed to be addressed. There was in the budget an administrative assistant for risk management and for the business administrator, and we are pleased to say that on the business administrator front, I actually have what will hopefully be a promising interview next week. I am committed to filling that position here before the end of the year, and I'm hopeful we'll have a business administrator in here soon. In the meantime, we're getting the office up and running, and Shakisha Bullock, who is here, is also doing some of the claims work that used to be done by Kalisha. Shakisha, maybe you'd like to just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Shakisha Bullock. I'm new to the Milltown area, a couple of years by way of North Carolina. I started here as a temp, and I'm pleased to say that I was selected to help in working in the Department of Administration. And I look forward to continuing to work with and for the citizens of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. You'll see Shakisha's smiling face on a daily basis. And finally, we have Tiffany Baldock, who is joining our legal department as our new litigator. She's also assuming some of the legal responsibilities that were previously a part of Kalisha's job description. So we've had a bit of a reorganization into these different positions, all of which were a part of the budget for this year. Tiffany, let them know about yourself.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Baldock. This is my second week here with the Solicitor's Office. I am the new litigator. I'm originally from New Jersey, don't hold it against me. I'm here, though, by way of Northumberland County, where I spent the last three years working for a president judge up there. I look forward to forging new relationships with all of you and working for the City of Harrisburg. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So thank you, Council, for just letting us take a moment to introduce the new faces. I think we really have a great diversity of talent here and backgrounds that are going to serve the city well. And I will make the general announcement to the public. We are currently searching for a deputy city solicitor and a business administrator. Those are two major positions which are currently open. As I say, I've got promising interviews lined up for, I think, both positions, but they're both open, and people are welcome to submit applications. So thanks for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor. And to the five new city employees, I welcome you and look forward to working with each one of you. Councilmembers, do you want to say anything?
Welcome to the team.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Representatives of Red Cross on the smoke alarm installations. Are they here? Chief? The representatives are not here?
I'm a volunteer.
Okay.
I'm a volunteer. You made the board that.
Okay.
So essentially, the Red Cross of the Capital Region is a great partner with the Bureau of Fire, and they are going to be doing their second or third smoke detector installation in conjunction with the Bureau of Fire in September. So we're focusing on the uptown, some uptown neighborhoods from Division Street South. I forget what the actual coordinates are. We hadn't had those finalized as of about three weeks ago. So again, it's going to be, they have a bunch of volunteers coming in to assist us. The fire bureau will be committed with them, and it'll be canvassing. So look for signs in street corners and things, and it'll be during the day. So if you're not home when they're there, there'll be door tags, there'll be fire prevention material handed out, and then if, you know, like I said, if you're not there afterwards, you can always call the fire department, Red Cross, and we'll come out and install smoke alarms for you.
Okay, how many are you looking at installing?
They are hoping to install, I believe, 1,000 smoke alarms, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Could you let me know the date, if I'm available, I can possibly.
Yes, I believe it's September 8. I was hoping that they would be here, but I believe it's September the 8.
Mr. Majors.
And if folks wanted to get additional information, is there a website we can go to, to folks, or is it just going to be the?
Yeah, if you go to the website for the American Red Cross Capital Region, that information will be there. If you have any questions, you can always call our office as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay, thank you, Chief. Moving on to our next communications, we have a request from two individuals who would like to speak to Council. Ms. King, Ms. Margaret, please come forward. Yeah?
This is on. I don't know whether it's on.
It's on, yes.
It's on, Ms. King.
Just have the speaker ready.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you for, Council, for allowing. My name is Carol King, and I am a member of the Heinz Center, Senior Center, and I brought some concerns before you this evening because they haven't been resolved. And with me is Mrs. Margaret Jacobs, and she also is a member. I know that we're, our time is limited, so I'm just going to basically tell you why we're here and what couldn't be resolved. Mr. Lester Ford is the director there, and on, just to bring you up to date, on July the 25th, we had a meeting. I had written out some concerns because I was co-chairing a community day that was going to be having a lot of people in from the community, and there were a lot of dead ants and what have you there. And he got, he's very rude to the, to me, to the seniors. He can be rude. When he holds meetings, he is very loud. In your package, you're going to find that some of the documentation, I'm not going to go over that, but you can look at it, and any questions, you can follow up with me at any later date. But I am willing to talk. There is another couple of people that were willing to come this evening, but they had previous engagements, but they too want their names, want to be on record, that they too want to share what they know, because it's been a pattern of Mr. Ford to intimidate people, to talk down to them, and then they just leave. Well, right now, he has a suit against me. He's put me out of the center. I had paid for a trip to go on the center on Atlantic City on the 18th of this month, and he met me at the bus and told me I wasn't allowed on, and I had a copy of the canceled check and everything. He said that the bus was rented under the name of the center, and I wasn't allowed on. He's also done things when we met with Council Chairperson, Mrs. Williams, on the 25th of July, we had this list of concerns, and part of it was, the facility was dirty, and the way he talked to people, he's yelling and yells, and I have ringing in the ears, and anybody that has that knows that's very painful. And anyhow, the room was filthy. The members are not allowed to use the boardroom. When he got the job, he, I found out that he absolved the advisory board, which brings us to the point where they have specific duties, and now no one is overseeing any of the finances, nothing. So that is concerning because there are needs up there, big needs, that need to be done, and yet they're not being taken care of because there's no money. And I have a question for Council to ask you. How much money annually is given to the Heinz Center from the city for block rent? That was one of my concerns. It's also, I had gotten from Mr. Bob Burns, who is the Director of the Area on Aging from the county, said that they get $75,000. So with that in mind, and then there's rentals that come up for that center, there's no fiscal accountability at all. When that council was, when the advisory council was in action, they had specific things that they were to do, and that was to, the council treasurer, each month provided the council and the center executive director with a detailed financial report. And that, that report, I might just, I can give you a copy of this, but what my bottom line is, they had checks and balances that they had to actually, it was run like a business that was very, very detailed. But now that there's nobody in charge, and he's absolved that committee, it's just be-so-ever. And the way that we're talked to is bad. The staff is, their attitudes are bad. The lunches, we go, I mean, I was told by Mr. Burns that the lunches were free, but we've been paying for the lunches. But one day, I didn't sign up, or at least I thought I did, because I don't eat pork, but that was the only day I didn't sign up, but I was told to get to the back of the line so everybody else could eat. Well, I didn't eat that day because, first of all, I lost my appetite, and then everything's done in front of everybody. And then remarks are made like, there's 23 people that ate today, only, I only have $19. What happened? Well, we're only 19 people paid. So these are the kinds of things that happen just alone in the kitchen, but there's other things, so many things that are documented that happen. And I was hit in the bathroom, in the ladies' bathroom, by a woman that wasn't even eligible to be a member. She's 51 years old, and she looked out and she saw me through the crack, and she deliberately pushed me, she pushed that door into me really hard, and then she comes out and says, I was talking to the woman that she brings up there. She said, excuse me, like that. And she, she had seen me before she hit me with the door. And then another time, I didn't say anything because when somebody says, excuse me, what can you do? But she had injured me. So then the next time I had interacted with the same woman, she, I was sitting in a seat, she was up at the counter getting something for this woman, and she hit, she came back and she punched me in my shoulder, which is, and really hard, and she said, I'm sitting here. And I said, I jumped out of the chair because it hurt me, and I said, excuse me, I didn't even see her. But these are the kinds of things that you can't go to Mr. Ford because he's not, his temperament is so bad until you just don't want to talk, not to him, not without somebody. Now, but I do, I'm interested in, I want to have Mrs. Jacobs to be able to have some of my time. But I do want you to know that I'm, we're looking for a resolution because I'm not allowed up there, and I do want to be a member. I enjoy being up there with them. I'm a retired registered nurse, and I have a lot to offer that center, and they have a lot to offer me, because I don't have any family here in Harrisburg, not one soul. And my closest relative is in North Carolina. So for me to have to be put out of a center that I paid for, and I have given a lot to that center, and I know I have, to be told like that and treated like that is just absolutely ridiculous. I've had the police called on me twice, and put me out, tell me to eat my lunch and get out, per Mr. Ford told the police that. And he filed a false police report because he told, I said, policeman, what did I do? And this was all after I filed that concerns. I said, what did I do? And he said, well, he told me that you were verbally abusive to his staff. I said, me? No, I don't do things like that. First of all, I'm a professional. I don't believe in that, never did. But to tell a lie like that and have that officer to tell me to get out, he said, well, eat your lunch, which Mr. Ford, I mean, Mr. Burns told me to go down there. He told me I was entitled to go there, and then when I got there, that's what I found. He called the police.
Ms. King, you want to give some time to Ms. Jacobs, because we have a full agenda. And I didn't want to, I apologize for interrupting, but. That's all right. You did give us all the documents. Ms. Jacobs, do you want to?
Good afternoon, I'm Ford. My name is Margaret Jacobs. I'm a friend of Carol King's, and what she has just stated is true. The center, it's not run properly, at least I don't think it's run properly. It's a disrespect for the seniors. And I know when I first, I'm on my second membership. My first membership was because a friend of mine asked me to come because she said it was, it was trouble down there. She said, I think you need to come and check it out. So when I went, it was cold, that first winter, it was very cold, and a lot of the seniors were complaining to me. What really had me upset was, I had just left the gym at the Jewish Community Center, and I came down there for lunch, and I saw this lady, Ms. Pleasant, she was 100 and something, and she was eating lunch with her hat, coat, and gloves on. And I said, why are you eating with your hat and your coat on? And she said, it's cold in here, baby, it's cold. And I took my jacket off, and it was cold, and we had a meeting, and I addressed it because I was a member then. And we were told that the heat was going to be cut up. And the one lady said, cut up to what? And I think Mr. Ford said, well, we'll cut it to 75. And they said, 75? This room is concrete, and it's just not right. These seniors, and I told them, I said, these seniors have beautiful homes. I said, and they come here to meet people and to meet new friends and to just mingle and offer what they have. And Mrs. Pleasant told me that they were sewing, and they were doing all this stuff. Well, they're not doing anything now. They play cards, and there's dominos, and this year so far, we have went on one trip to Atlantic City, and a gambling trip, I'll put it that way.
Both were gambling. We went to two in May. We weren't here back.
Okay. They went on a trip in May.
To gambling, kissing.
Okay. But my main concern is, I know seniors, and I know people say, well, you know, their lunches are only a dollar. Well, Mr. Burns told me, and we were just talking, and I said to him, I said, I didn't have, I had a 20 and a 10, and I said, I need a dollar so I can pay for my lunch. And I went to Joanne, who works there in the office, I don't know her last name, but she said that she would give me change for my 20. And Mr. Burns said, what? I said, I had to pay a dollar for my lunch. He said, the lunches are free. He said, what do you mean, you had to pay a dollar? He said, now, if you want to give a donation, but who do you write the check to? Who do you give the money to if you want to give a donation? But when you do not have a dollar, it's hard on you to eat. And I know this one lady that was there, and I, she wasn't eating a couple of days, and she might have had some special problems, but I think it was a shame that she had to sit there and not eat. But now, I see her eating, because I eat there. I ate there every day last week, and I did not pay. And a couple of the seniors came up to me and said, well, Margaret, I'll pay, I've got a dollar for you. You know, I, look, don't you pull no money out. I said, these lunches are free. If we want to give a, if I want to give a donation, I'll write a check out, and, but I got to find out first, who do I make the check out to? And then we had a little quick meeting, and Mr. Ford informed me that, yes, there is people who don't have a dollar to pay, but those that have a dollar and refuse to pay, then you have to fill a paper out, and then you have to put your social security number. I think he said the last four digits, but I just, I lost it when he said that. And a couple of the men up at the center had told me, they said, well, we'll fill, we'll be filling out papers every day. He said, because I have a pamphlet here from the Department of Aging, and the lunches are free. But if you so choose to give a donation, you can do that. But who do we, who do we write the check out to? And why would you make a donation of $1, of $1 when it's, the meals are good, they're hot. If they're not hot, there's a microwave there that you can heat it up. But I would like some clarity on that.
Thank you, ladies. And let me just say to the councilmembers, I did meet with Mr., Ms. Jacobs and Ms. King. I didn't, they didn't go into detail as much as they did today. I did meet with Mr. Burns from the Department of Aging for Dauphin County. He did say that the meals are free, provided by the county. For the last five years, Mr. Ford has been collecting a dollar every day from the senior citizens.
Ms. Williams.
Pardon me.
Also, just a little quick note, there are small, little brown envelopes that have our names on them, and they're like laying on a table, and when you come in at lunchtime, you take the envelope and you put your dollar in, and when you go up to get your lunch, you lay the dollar and the envelope on the counter.
Okay. Well, I just want to let the councilmembers know that we don't have any jurisdiction over the Heinz Senior Center because it is a nonprofit 501(c), but the Dauphin County does. And I wanted to hear what you ladies had to say, and that's why I brought you before Council. You asked, you know, could you have 10 or 20 minutes to speak to Council? At this point, we did allocate $25,000 to the Heinz Senior Center, and I understand that I did go to visit. It is, as you indicated. He is, as you stated, he is very arrogant. He gets agitated with the senior citizens, and I can confer that. But I will say this to you, that I've been in touch with Mr. Burns and also all of the members of the commission, and they are looking into an investigation at this time with Mr. Ford as far as charging a dollar for the meals and also for all the funding that comes into the Heinz Senior Center that cannot be accounted for. So thank you for coming today, but we have already reallocated the $25,000 under the CDBG money to the Heinz Senior Center. So you asked a question, that's how much we gave this year.
Okay, well, may I ask, was it the investigation? Because I had.
I have nothing to do with the investigation. I was just told by Commissioner Hartwick that there is an investigation ongoing at this point.
So I'm not to return to the center?
I can't tell you that. You probably have to talk to Mr. Burns. You may need to call him, because they have jurisdiction over the senior centers in the City of Harrisburg and also in the county.
Well, with this ongoing investigation, I know you said you didn't have anything to do with that. The center is a lovely place. It's the perfect, it's in the perfect neighborhood, that's my own neighborhood.
Okay.
And a lot of seniors are waiting to join.
Okay.
Yeah, I was number 85 when I joined in November, and right now, they have anywhere from 11 to 20 coming every day, and I, I mean, it's just like people have disappeared.
Well, thank you for making us aware of what's happening there, because next year, when he does ask for money for the Heinz Senior Center, there's certainly questions that we need to ask of him. Any councilmembers, any questions?
I just have one quick question, maybe, I don't know if you guys answered it, or President Williams. Is there a board? I'm sure there's a hiring body for, you know, whoever the executive director is, or a board who manages, who signs off with the.
I just have one quick question and maybe, I don't know if you guys answered it or President Williams, is there a board? I'm sure there's a hiring body for, you know, whoever the executive director is or a board who manages, who signs off of the finances, which the executive director has to report to? And like, when do they meet and how's that structure set up?
Okay, may I just quickly address that? Right now, there are three board members. Mr. Boyd Strain and I believe he's acting president and then there's Barbara Shelton. I'm not sure whether she's the secretary or the treasury. And then there's Mrs. Carol Boyanowski or something like that. She's an attorney that sits on the board, those three people. But when he, there was a lady named Fran Harris that had that job before, six years ago, and she left to take another job and he moved into that position. He said he volunteered to do it, to go as an acting director until they found someone. Well, the job was never posted and then when Mrs. Williams met with us, with him on July twenty-fifth, I made mention of that. And he said, "Well, everybody knew that." Well, no, everybody didn't know that because he absorbed the board. I mean, he did have an advisory board, which I put in your packet, that the flowchart of who it was and what they were responsible for. And it was really, I mean, he gave all the checks and balances that you would want to see a good business have and it was wonderful.
So are we saying there is no board that runs?
There's no board, no.
Is it a three-member board?
The three-member board is non-functional.
Every two months I was told and I don't know, but I was asked to be on that board by the president and he had excused the president that day and told the president, well, it was just me and the attorney that was in that meeting. And so whenever I shared with him that the president had asked me to be on the board, he said, "Well, he looked at me and said, 'Well, that'll never happen.'" And the attorney that was there, Mrs. Boyanowski, she looked at him like, "Are you kidding?" Because long-term here, it was my specialty. So anyhow, that's where that is.
Any other questions, council members? Mr. Majors, okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. I hope it gets resolved.
Those are checks in there, Ms. King, and I don't think you wanted to give me in that package. Those are checks, those are checks to you. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda. Thank you so much, ladies. I move on to the courtesy of the floor. And at this time, anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so. Note that since there are so many of you tonight, we want to hear everyone, that we will have you only speak for two minutes. At this time, please come to the mic, to my right, please come to the mic.
Good evening, council members and everyone else. My name is Linda M. Kamak. I reside at eleven oh four North Sixteenth Street and have resided there for the past fifty-nine years. I am here to speak about a drug and alcohol rehab house that was placed in our neighborhood without our knowing. This area is not zoned for commercial, it is zoned for residential. A petition was not circulated, which my understanding is, has to be done so that the residents know what is going on. Residents of that house, there's about six, six to seven men that reside in the upstairs at eleven oh two, who some wear ankle monitors, some walk around like they're on Thorazine and they smoke so much that the smoke comes through my house and my window. This company, my understanding is that the owner who resides in Mechanicsburg has taken up with this company called CSG and he purchased the house to make it into this type of rehab house. If this is the case, is this property being taxed as a single-family dwelling, which is only zoned for, or is it being taxed as a business? There is a school which is less than a quarter of a mile from this particular place. The people that reside there, are they pedophiles? What is their, what is their issue? Have they registered? We are a predominantly black neighborhood and the property owner, I feel, was putting this in our neighborhood. Did he think it was going to go unnoticed or try to camouflage it to put it in our There are senior citizens and children that live in that neighborhood as well. The senior citizens in that neighborhood are afraid to come out and sit on their porches. No one sits on their porches anymore because they are deathly afraid of these people who just hang around. When I get ready to go to work in the morning, I see some of them peering out down on my porch at me or they're sitting on the porch smoking cigarettes. It's very, it's very scary to me because I've never had to deal with anything like that before. And they're operating as a business. Do they have a mercantile license? I don't even know if the city is even aware of this. Our property value, I'm sure, has diminished and I've been fighting, I've been fighting for this since January.
Okay, Ms. Kamak, I did receive something from Ben Schmidt and he has been in touch with the mayor. Did you see something from Benjamin Schmidt regarding Mr. Way, who is the owner of that? That he did check into it, that it's legally a multi-family dwelling and it's not a supportive housing?
It is zoned as a legal, is a family dwelling for two families, one upstairs at eleven oh two and one downstairs at eleven hundred.
Okay, so it's not, it's not
It's not being used that way, no. They have different men in and out, in and out all the time.
Okay, well, it does state that he's on the faith that the owner's being honest, but the code's affirmed that it appears to function as a normal household and that if there's illegal activity taking place, they were not aware of it, but he will check into it so we can, because this is something he sent to you, mayor. We can check in, I can check into, check with Mr. Smith again and find out what's going on.
Well, I'm sure all those men are not related. None of them look alike.
Okay.
Some are short, some are tall, some are fat.
I'm reading an email he sent to me and it is stating that it is a multi-family dwelling and you're saying it is not, it's a supportive housing. So I will look into it. I will contact Mr. Smith tomorrow and find out exactly what type of situation we have here. But he did talk to the owner and the owner is stating that it is multi-family.
No, codes has advised me upstairs that it is a single-family dwelling upstairs and a single-family dwelling for downstairs.
It's a multi-family, two-tier.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay.
You say eleven oh two North Fifteenth Street?
Eleven hundred and eleven oh two North Sixteenth Street. It's right on the corner, it's the old Bradley residence, Andrew Bradley.
Well, I'll check with Zoney and Mr. Smith and I'll check with Dave Patton with codes and we'll find out what's going on.
And I had spoken with Building and Housing as well, but they will not, they've just dropped the ball. Nobody wants to talk to me anymore. But I will not give up, trust me. I will not give up. I will not have this in my neighborhood. I worked all my life and I have to deal with drug addicts. I have nothing wrong with them, God bless them, you know, but not in my neighborhood. Put it over there in Mechanicsburg where you live.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. King.
Good evening. My name is Louis Butt, six twelve Seneca Street. I want to say the city council that we have now is one of the most engaged city council that I've ever seen in Harrisburg. And these guys, I want to give you kudos because these guys are really community engaged and I appreciate that. Reverend Bradley was actually a pastor of mine and that was a fantastic house as being raised up in Harrisburg. That house raised me and it is an atrocity, it has turned into an atrocity. I want to also say to the PAL baseball team, they did a fantastic job this year. If these guys didn't know, PAL and that organization did a fantastic job. They were winners and we need more of that in this community. I'm also here again for Camp Curtain and our Civil War heritage. Within the last several months, we've been going over nationwide identity crisis regards to who we are and what we stand for when it comes to monuments and things of that nature. I've been really pestering like a mark the mayor regarding our history. I know you're not really into our Civil War history, but it's vital.
Not true.
No, no, no. I understand that you're not and it's vital that we understand our history so we can have a stand on what is right and what is wrong. We have to make sure our people understand that we won the Civil War. There is a compassion that goes along, along and a morality that goes along with winning the Civil War that we have to reflect to our citizens and our senior citizens as we grow along and grow older. If you make that hallowed ground Civil War era like I had mentioned several times, it would, it would offer opportunities for grants and money to reconstruct an economic development zone in Camp Curtain. The Civil War museum would help with that federally also. They're waiting to feed money to the Camp Curtain area, but we have to follow suit. Now, and also about our compost situation regards to Susquehanna Township, our incinerator, Cameron's Lawn, the place where I grew up, I know there's areas in which we can make compost along that road in which I grew up to drive on. There's areas near the incinerator that we can make the compost area so we wouldn't be butting heads with Susquehanna Township. That's what self-sustainability is all about, not feeding somebody else our trash, but taking care of our own trash. I just want to throw out a couple of things that differentiates somebody who knows our city in comparison to somebody that doesn't know our city. Now, and hiring people from, that aren't from our city is vital. We must incorporate and look at the people who have an academia to manage our city. It's important that we hire our own and that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. Anyone else to my right, please come to the mic.
So I want to address the vote that's going to occur about the sixty-five thousand dollars for riot gear.
You state your name for your record, please.
And your address, please. Is that within the city of Harrisburg?
No, it is not. May I continue, please?
Yeah, you can submit those to our city clerk and your concerns about the vote that we're going to do then, because this is for city residents. I would like to hear from city residents. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hillary Hedson. I live at fourteen oh four North Sixth Street in Harrisburg. I'm here to talk to you about emotional appeals. When it comes to determining the validity or factuality of a claim, any attempt to sway an argument via emotion rather than the quality of the logic or evidence can be considered a fallacy. And I've heard many of them in regards to this issue and message boards and forums online and in conversations around the city and it seems to come down to simple misunderstandings. The false dilemma, you either agree that police need riot gear or you want police to be hurt. This fallacy simply paints an issue as one between two extremes with no possible room for middle ground or nuance or compromise. It's closely related to the straw man fallacy, which essentially paints one side instead of both as so extreme that no one can agree with it. For example, people who are against police getting riot gear are anarchists who don't care about police officers' lives. I can't speak for everyone here, but I don't want police officers to get hurt. I care about police officers' lives, but I'm against spending sixty-five thousand dollars on riot gear for police and I still wonder why riot gear would cost that much for only thirty suits, so I found the same riot gear that the LAPD uses for sale at a fraction of that cost. This is a false dilemma. Police officers have many ways of limiting or controlling protests other than riot gear. They can prevent protesters from carrying sticks or weapons or confiscate them if they see them. They can designate areas for protesters and counter protesters with a twenty-foot neutral zone between the two. They can coordinate with community organizers to prevent problems before they start. A less adversarial relationship with local protesters would increase everyone's safety, including police. If these tactics fail, they can call in state police, Capitol Police, or even the National Guard if the situation is escalating beyond their abilities. These officers have already have militarized riot gear and if it is needed, then they are available and the goal should be to prevent it being needed. And is it needed? Your chances of being a victim of a violent crime in Harrisburg is one in eighty-three, which is twelve percent. Let's be generous and assume that the riot gear for police could help somehow the situation half of the time. That means we're paying sixty-five thousand dollars for equipment that will be used less than six percent of the time. Let's look at another fallacy. Police officers are more protected while wearing riot gear. Police officers need to be protected in order to protect the public. Police officers should purchase riot gear. The problem with this is the premise. It seems like common sense and like a great deal of common sense, it is actually fallacious. It is a non sequitur. The conclusion does not logically follow from the premise because despite how logical it seems, riot gear does not necessarily make police safer. Luckily, we have research to draw on to help us understand how crowds work and for the purpose of this explanation, I'll be using the word crowd instead of the word mob because I believe that word is prejudicial and implies that a crowd is violent or out of control when many crowds are actually self-policing and highly organized. It also implies that a mob has one goal and acts as one when reality crowds are full of individuals who are all making individual choices. And the most current model in crowd behavior is called the elaborated social identity model and its basic premise is that the social identity of people in a crowd shift with the situation.
Okay, ma'am, your two minutes are up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
If you would like, if you would like to, you can submit your
Can you submit a copy to us, please?
Your copy for us.
Yes, where can I submit it?
To our city clerk, please, thank you. As well as the young lady who couldn't speak, would you please give us a copy? Thank you. You got one copy?
I don't have a physical copy.
Our city clerk's email address is, and sorry, Kurt, but I'm going to put it out there, but it's K-P-E-T-R-O-S-K-I at HarrisburgPA.gov. So if you want to, I'll write, I'll give you a copy over there.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, for giving me the opportunity, but thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Max and I live in the Midtown neighborhood of Harrisburg. I just want to take a moment and speak about the whole topic of violence, which seems to be a really prevailing theme and why people are arguing that police should have riot gear. I want to challenge the idea that protesters are violent. I want to point to the lack of transparency in dealing with the Shaleek Moss murder by Harrisburg Police and the way that basically just got swept under the rug. I want to challenge the idea that a protester stabbed a police horse. I'm going on record and saying that I call bull [BLEEP]. I don't think that happened. I don't believe them. I don't believe the evidence and I am, I'm not going to lie, I'm pretty angry right now. You see me here, I'm being nonviolent. I'm one of those anarchists everyone likes to talk about. I'm here. I'm an anarchist. I'm not going to hide that fact. I'm here, I'm participating in the government, I'm doing my part, but I don't agree with it. I don't think that the police serve the interests of the people. I don't believe that the government is transparent. I don't believe that our people are violent. I think that we stand against violent people. We saw what happened in Charlottesville. My sister was ten feet away from the car that plowed into those protesters. The police were ordering each other to stand down and let everything happen. The anarchists, the anti-fascists, the communists, the socialists, they were the ones with medic gear. They were the ones passing out water. They were the ones passing out granola bars and they were the ones physically defending people from the assault of white supremacists. So if you want to take a look at me, take a good, hard look, you want to call me an anarchist and a terrorist, you go ahead and do that. I'll keep bringing my medic gear, I'll keep bringing my water, I'll keep coming to those meetings. You can keep putting me on your watch lists. You can keep sending me death threats. I have no shame in who I am. I'm not a violent man, but I will defend my community and I will never condemn anyone else for doing so.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else to my right, please?
Hi, Amanda Arbor, fifteen twenty-seven Dairy Street. I also want to address the proposed reallocation of the sixty-five thousand dollars for Harrisburg Police Department to purchase riot gear. I think we all know that there is a deep mistrust between police and community, you know, that's our reality.
Could you just speak up, please, Amanda?
Sure. We all know that there is a deep mistrust between our police and our community and that's our reality. And so I think really what this decision hinges upon is, are you going to listen to the people who have been telling you that this is not what we want, this is not something that will make us feel safer, that this is not something that will bring police and community members closer together? but will rather drive a further wedge? Um, you know, as studies have shown, um, getting militarized gear escalates situations, um, whether it's a protest or other situations that it may be used in. Um, we need de-escalation in our community, um, not escalation. Um, and we want to invest in building trust.
Quiet, please.
And we want to invest in building trust. Um, and so use the $65,000 to provide training that the community has been asking for. Use the $65,000 for measures that community members can work with city council on, um, that will actually make us feel safer. Invest in trust, because that is ultimately what will make our community stronger in the long term, not just, um, any kind of Band-Aid solution, um, that comes out of fear, um, because we want to break down the fear that exists, um, between the police and community, and by that, we have to work together, um, on solutions and build trust. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my, thank you.
My name is Pam Parsons, um, 705 North Sixteenth Street, and tonight I'm speaking to you both as a city resident and as a member of the Central Pennsylvania Chapter of the National Lawyers Guild. Um, the Central Pennsylvania Chapter of the National Lawyers Guild would like to go on record as opposing this allocation of $65,000 for riot gear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Zennick. I live at 933 North Second Street. Uh, I would like to inter, and I am a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'd like to reiterate that all of us here on the left side of the room do not wish to see the police getting $65,000 for riot gear, because we find it, that it is completely unnecessary in the course of our protests, and perhaps they should look at the threats coming from folks that live outside the city. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Joshua Rhodes. I'm a resident of Uptown. Um, a lot of good, I, I'm also here to address the $65,000 reallocation of funds towards riot gear. So I guess two weeks ago, I, I looked on Penn Live to, uh, find, find this incident, but I, I wasn't able to find it. I did, however, find a similar incident that occurred in 2010, where a police officer was on Second Street and used mace. Uh, right, in 2010, this was outside of the Dragonfly. Two weeks ago, this occurred outside of Tom Sawyer's, which is an open-air nightclub. Dozens of people were maced by this, this officer. Um, and it, I, I believe I'm correct in, in assuming that some of the funds will be used to get tear gas and gas masks to go along with that. It's my feeling that if the police aren't capable of correctly assessing an appropriate situation to use mace and use it correctly, then they probably are not trained well enough to be using tear gas. And as somebody who has traveled the country protesting and seen, been very close to riots, I've never seen tear gas used, and it would break my heart to see it used in Harrisburg.
Hi, my name is Ashford Isley. I am a resident of Uptown Harrisburg. And it was brought to my attention yesterday that the White House announced that they intend, that Donald Trump on Monday intends to issue an executive order repealing the ban on giving police, um, uh, what's the word? The excess military equipment. Um, so they're going to be militarized anyway. There's no point in giving them $65,000 to go ahead and buy new equipment that they're going to receive for free anyway. Additionally, I'm an activist. I go to a lot of protests. In my experience in Harrisburg and elsewhere, the more hands-on the police are, the more scared the citizens get, and the more likely there is to be violence. As far as I'm aware, there haven't been any riots in Harrisburg in decades. It's just, it's a waste of taxpayer money.
Thank you, Ash.
Thank you.
Anyone else to my left, I mean, my right?
Hi, um, my name's Keith Benson at, um, 705 North Sixteenth Street. I've been at two of the events, both the Klan rally on November 5th and the events that happened at the anti-Sharia law demonstrations that, um, are at the heart of what this discussion is about in terms of the monies to be sent or spent on riot gear. And the first event was mostly policed by the state, uh, state police officers. The second event, when someone talks about outsiders coming to create problems, there were 150 oath keepers in the back of the Capitol, open carrying AR-15s and sidearms. Okay, the same types of people that were at Charlotte. Okay? It is illegal for open carrying of weapons, as I understand it, on Capitol grounds. There were no Capitol Police officers taking these weapons from these men. There were no Harrisburg Police officers doing that. I suspect that that might not have been their job and so forth. But they acted as a police force unto themselves without control or regulation. Okay? So let's place the correct emphasis where it needs to go. Our officers, I do not wish any harm to, and I would like them to be protected and trained well. But let's be real about what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else to my right?
Hi, my name is Sarah Christian, and I live on North Street in Harrisburg. I'm coming here just as an, an average community member. Um, I'm also a project manager, though. And so based on what I've heard from this, from the news people that have been reporting the past few times that this has been discussed, um, this sounds to me like a lack of training that's involved here and how they don't know how to, uh, control crowds and how they don't know how to de-escalate. I don't know if that is required training. If it's not, um, I would hope that they would have requested additional training first before requesting a new shiny toolset. I know that when I'm working with my teams as a project manager, I have to make sure that everything runs smoothly and that people are performing to the best of their ability. The toolset does not affect that. I have worked with, um, really old toolsets. I've worked with new ones. Um, honestly, if you have someone that's good at their job, they're good at their job regardless of what their toolset is. And what makes them good at their job is their training and their skills. Um, I mean, I just feel like rather than asking for $65,000 for riot gear, the first step should have been to request, you know, additional money possibly to get that training in, you know, to add more hours in. And if that's not required, then maybe that's going back and looking at policy. Um, so I would not support the $65,000 budget to go to them. I feel like that money can be allocated elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, um, my name is Catherine Legaro. I live in New Cumberland. Again, I said that last time.
I'm going to ask that you submit your information, please, Via.
You can't do that.
I can do that.
First of all.
First of all, they have to be a resident in the city of Harrisburg.
First of all, I know, I have seen her at restaurants. I know she's a taxpayer in this city. I can't vouch for her because I've never seen her, but she has been taxed.
I am the president, and I'm saying to her that I cannot.
I think Conlon 101 is, is pretty simple and pretty straightforward. You can't shut people out from participating.
And they have to be a resident of the city of Harrisburg.
Can you, excuse me? Um, I, I am an organizer in Harrisburg, PA.
And I'm not going to get into arguments, because I don't want to control this meeting.
There's a solicitor. I am a community organizer in Harrisburg, PA, and I am the founder of Harrisburg Rising.
Are you a resident, taxpayer and resident of the city of Harrisburg?
I came here from Puerto Rico when I was nine years old to Harrisburg, PA. I lived across the street.
Are you a taxpayer and resident of the city of Harrisburg?
I am a taxpayer of this country.
Okay.
And I'm an organizer in this city.
Can you send that information?
I'm here all the time.
Can you please send that information?
I would please, like a chance to speak on my piece from our solicitor. And I would really appreciate a chance to say what I feel and why I think it's important for, uh.
No, I will not. And please, if, if she does not leave the mic, please remove her, because I'm not going to allow someone else who could not have an opportunity to speak for not being a taxpayer of the city of Harrisburg. Under our regulation, third-class city, it says that taxpayers are allowed to speak at legislative meetings of city council.
And she is a taxpayer. She is.
She is not a taxpayer. She does not live in the city of Harrisburg.
I actually met with, uh, chief of Capitol, uh, chief of, uh, Capitol Police this morning, uh, as, because of a rally that I am holding on December 2nd. I spoke with the Deputy Secretary of Property Administration, and I wanted to share with you what we spoke about and what my concerns are as far as the police receiving more attacks.
And ma'am, I will, and you would have that opportunity after the meeting, but I will not allow you to speak, because you're not a taxpayer of the city of Harrisburg. And I did not allow her to speak, so I, I have to give you the same.
I also purchased, uh, my stuff.
Ma'am, would you please, would you please refrain from?
I will have you removed if you don't, if you dis, if you don't discontinue your conversation.
Can we get a legal opinion?
Make sure you have that legal opinion for us next week, at the next meeting.
I believe that, um, Councilwoman Daniels is asking for a, a ruling, and so technically what I sit here as in the council is the parliamentarian.
Exactly.
The ruling belongs to the chair.
Thank you.
I can advise as to the parliamentarian.
Thank you, and I am the president. She's the vice president.
You're also our city solicitor, and you're also the person who's charged with making sure that we cannot be sued for violating the Constitution or the myriad of statutes that govern us.
Well, I wasn't done talking, but.
Right.
If she knew, if she read the third-class city code, she would know that, Mr. Grover.
I'm sorry, I went to law school, and I took Conlon 101.
Doesn't matter, everybody go to law school, it's not knowledgeable.
It's simple constitutional law.
Mr. Grover. Are you done, please? I'm sorry.
I was not done, if, if I may.
I'm sorry we interrupted, I, if I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Madam President, it is your microphone, Madam President. Um, the third-class city code and the tradition of this council has been that, uh, there can be limits on who speaks. There, uh, whether that withstands, as Councilwoman Daniels says, a constitutional muster is frankly, from my view, an unresolved question under the third-class city code and under the Sunshine Act. Um, that is, it, but both are fair considerations, but there is, I can tell you that, that there actually is a provision that, that gives the ability to limit it. Uh, it has rarely been litigated in Pennsylvania, uh, and the right to speak in a public forum to redress grievances is, is a significant right. Whether it leads to any other actual damages, actual rights or actual injuries, a different question altogether. I do not believe, under these circumstances, there's any actual injury. Uh, there was an alternative forum offered to communicate information, if that's, that what it's, but I think it's a question worth giving a more formal opinion of.
Yeah, I think it's a strict, strict scrutiny question.
Thank you. Do that. In the meantime, the president, and I'm sitting here as the chair, and she, I will not give her an opportunity to speak if I did not allow her to speak.
What I was saying is that I know she is a taxpayer because I've seen her at restaurants. I have not seen her, so I can't vouch for her. I don't know who else.
She said she's not a taxpayer. She's not.
You said a lot of money in Harrisburg, so that makes it.
You could spend my, you could spend all the money you want to in Harrisburg if you do.
I will speak for her, okay? I'll speak for her.
If you do not reside in the city of Harrisburg, ma'am, that's what I'm saying to you.
Well, well, sir, I, I think.
Mr. Major, please, if you'd like to say something.
Oh, may I? I, I believe if she's going to speak, she can speak for herself and provide us with written comments per President Williams', uh, direction as of right now. Uh, but if you would, I mean, if, under public comment, you can speak to what you would like to, and we will continue on.
How's everybody doing? My name is Mr. Ramsey. I'm CEO of a nonprofit organization called 13 Love. Before I start into my subject, I want to tell the city to keep everything positive and keep the vibes good. Far as this over here, I'm going to help them lead the protest. Officer Carter, I'll make sure that the protest and everything stays peaceful, so we do not need riot gear. So y'all could probably save that $65,000 for a community center that we need. All right? I will make sure the protest stays peaceful. We don't need any riot gear on December 2nd. I'm going to get with them, and I'm going to make sure everything stays peaceful. So we need no riot gear, no SWAT team. We don't need no CNN out here in Harrisburg. Okay? Keep that in them other states and cities. But, um, today, I will like to request the city, if my organization called 13 Love, we do yoga, Tai Chi within the school district, um, I have two of my young men over here. That's part of my Tai Chi class as well. We are in desperate need of a facility, and we are realizing that there's numerous amounts of buildings and community centers all around the city that is not being operated in. So we are requesting that y'all provide us, if y'all could provide us with a community center, um, maybe Allison Hill, just in mind. It is just sitting right there, and Allison Hill does have, um, a $2 million grant that was given to Allison Hill for the reconstruction that could also be used for the community center as well. Um, that is my nonprofit. Now, for my profit, this is the business. I'm actually working with some real estate agents from New York City. We have 100 to 200 homes addresses that we need the city to go over these homes and advise us whether or not these homes is owned by the city or owned by a private owner, because we are working on a, um, low-income project from our organization that will provide 100 homes for less than $500 a month. This will cost us $500,000 to purchase these homes. I average of $5,000 per home, and it'll take $1.5 million to reconstruct these homes. These homes will be affordable and will be open for any low-income, um, families or anything, but this low-income housing would not be part of the government. This would be part of 13 Love Low-Income Housing. So today, I'm asking that the city work with my organization. We're in desperate need. We, um, we're always doing after-school programs. It's time for us to get our own building. I mean, I have children all throughout the city, on, in every part of the city, and the only thing I could tell them is just wait until the after-school program starts. I want to be able to, to provide a space and a facility for them so we could bring them in when school is over.
Thank you, sir.
But I would like to end this, and I would like to thanks the city of Harrisburg very much. Sorry. Oh, and if y'all mind, if y'all could give us one minute, my young men actually want to show y'all some of our Tai Chi poses, if y'all mind.
Sure.
Okay? Y'all ready? Okay. First, the, the first Tai Chi exercise we're going to do is called "The Sky Is Falling."
You guys can't be shy. Come on.
All right? The sky is falling is part of one of our Tai Chi exercises. Tai Chi is very beneficial to the kids in Harrisburg School District. Last year, we've seen a decrease, numerous decreases in suspensions at Downey Elementary. So 13 Love is really beneficial to our community as well as Tai Chi. Okay? For this exercise, we would spread our legs, we would put our hands on our knees, and we would gently breathe in through the nose. And we'll breathe out through the mouth. We would exhale. And this right here is slowing the mind down and allowing children to be able to, um, breathe, calibrate on their thoughts. It's a very relaxing exercise that, um, children and teachers in this school district are very familiar with. And that is "The Sky Is Falling."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grover here mentioned something about community, just a minute, please. Mentioned something about community, Allison Hill. Have we, or how far are we with that?
I'm sorry, I could not hear you, Madam President.
With the Allison Hill Community Center, are we still investigating?
I do not have an answer to that, ma'am.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, hi, my name is Guy. I live, uh, uptown on Second Street. Uh, I'll second the, uh, Tai Chi motion. I found that to be extremely relaxing to even watch, so I think that'd be a great program. I also want to add my voice to the chorus of those who are calling, uh, for the $65,000 to be allocated instead of for new updated riot gear towards some sort of de-escalation training that would bring the police department closer to the community in a positive, peaceful way as opposed to, as a, as in a, you know, a, a, a force of power or something to, you know? That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Hani Elsindalar. I live off of Green and McClay. I've lived there for several years. I'm a part of the local theater community. I work with a lot of theater groups with groups of various shapes and sizes and ages. I'm also part of the local LGBT community, and I'm part of that in many facets. I spoke to this last time, and I do want to keep it brief, but I do feel the need to address what's being discussed in regards to the allocation of the $65,000. The last meeting, I'm thankful that you all are bringing this back to the attention that it needs, because at the last meeting, there was not even a representative from the Harrisburg Police Department that was left to hear the numerous concerns of many citizens. I think that's only added to the mistrust. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the need for de-escalation training, but there are several citizen-led groups that, for the last couple of years, have been requesting a citizen review board to work with the police, to make sure that police are knowledgeable about their communities and can be safe in those communities and can actually keep those communities safe. So I think it's clear that the desire of the citizens of this city is for funding and time and energy to be spent with HPD. But in light of the requests that have gone on, this action kind of feels like a slap in the face, that this has been pushed to the forefront when other measures that have actually been requested by citizens have not made progress. Thank you.
Is that it from everyone?
Thank you so much for being here so late at night. My name is Tara Stark Mueller. I live at 660 Bo Street in Midtown. I wanted to stand up and address the, again, the Monday announcement by the Trump administration that police would be allowed to take surplus military gear. The $65,000 is an unnecessary allocation in light of that decision. In addition, it's been fairly clear over the multiple meetings that we've had regarding this issue that the community tends to stand against this. If this is a representative democracy, it would probably be the right move to vote against this measure. In addition, I was here for a meeting following the last time we had this many people on your right. And if I remember correctly... Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Aulet. You made a recommendation that night that the police and the mayor meet with the community and have at least two community meetings before a vote would take place on this issue. If there have been such meetings, I have been completely unaware of it, as have all of the other folks in the community. And to have this vote tonight and to vote into the affirmative would, again, be a sign of... It could create more mistrust between the community and the police. I just wanted to make sure that we were remembering all of the things that we've said in the past and holding true to them and holding true to our constituents. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, Tara. Thank you. Anyone else from my right again? Anyone?
Hello, my name is Danny Martin. I live in Midtown off Fourth and Riley. I'm also speaking to oppose the riot gear allocation and also some comments about the militarization from the Trump administration. Just to say, I don't think we should do that either. I don't agree with the comments of, "We don't need to fund this, someone else will." A study of that program by multiple universities, including Harvard, found that police departments that received that government military gear did have an increase in police killings and violence and reports of misuse of force. So, I don't think that's an alternative that we should be looking into. I'd also like to echo the call for a police review board by the citizens. I think especially with the long-term calls for this, the thing we need to be doing now is not to hold, hand more power to the police, but hold more power, hand more power to the citizens over the people that police them. Government power comes from us, and we should have a say in it at every level, at every opportunity. I'd also like to speak on transparency. Just in, when the agendas of these meetings are posted, I'm not sure when you finalize them, but they, for us, it's, they come up very shortly beforehand. I believe there were some Facebook posts last night about what we would be speaking about, and I believe it appeared on the calendar within the last week. I think for a fully engaged citizenry, we really ought to know what's happening at these ahead of time, at least as soon as you have finalized it. I'd also like to speak on the term limit resolution that's coming up later. I also, I think if we are going to be doing reforms about how our city government functions electorally, we should also be considering the ability to recall our officials, again with state power being derived from us. We should also have the ability to revoke our representatives that we've elected. We should be able to take that back. That's a basic function of any government, I believe, and it's not something new. This is pretty standard in many other local and state governments, all the way up to the governor in some states, such as Wisconsin. I think that covers it. Yeah, that got it. All right. Thank you for your time.
And Danny, regarding the term limit resolution, we will be having a committee at the Hall. You may attend that committee meeting and voice your opinion.
When is that?
September 5th.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me. I wasn't on the mic, so I'll repeat that. Regarding the term limit resolution, it will be September the 5th at 5:30.
No, I'm talking about the agenda.
Oh, the agendas. You were talking, you were speaking about the agendas. Our agendas are finalized at 12 o'clock on a Friday afternoon, and they're generally put out on Monday morning.
Yeah, they're posted.
They're posted.
They're posted on our, if you're able, they're on our website. And the way I get them to my phone, besides just the website, if you download a Google Calendar or you follow the city of Harrisburg website, it'll pop up to your calendar. I do try to remember to post it on my Facebook page, so I copy and paste it so people can know. But there are, soon as they're posted, soon as they're finalized on that Friday, RCP Clerk always posts them. And if, you can also probably, I'll have to put you out there again, Kirk, send an email to Kirk, and he probably can put you on like a lister or something, kind of, if you want to receive notice of that, that could probably work, too.
Now, the only time that they're not posted on Friday is if we have additional resolutions that come down. It's very important, it's time-sensitive. Then we'll wait till Monday morning.
So this is every Friday?
Yes. Well, Friday before the legislative session.
Got you.
Okay, anyone else to my right? Go on once, go on twice.
I'm Janice Stroh. I live at 1531 Fishing Creek Valley Road, Harrisburg. I would just like to speak about the effect of the fear that this gear would cause. Fear is what causes conflict. Fear is what causes retaliation.
I'm sorry, you said...
Hold on. Is that not within...
No, that's not within, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm sorry. Anyone else to my right, please?